Greetings, everyone. Welcome to the September 23rd Selectmen's Meeting. Highway Commissioners, Cemetery Commissioners, First Order of Business, it's the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
This meeting is being recorded, and we're having a problem with our chatter broadcast, or if you look up at the TV, you won't see yourselves.
However, Mr. Chairman, it is broadcasting.
It's still broadcasting, we just, in this room, we can't see ourselves. And before we get started, on behalf of the Board and the town, I'd like to send our sympathies to the family of Mark Bartel, Mark is the burial agent for the town of Dudley. His mother passed after an illness. Roberta Bartel served as the Board of Health Clerk at one time, was also, I believe, the first executive director of the Dudley Housing Authority, and I'm sure I speak on behalf of everyone, we send our sympathies to the Bartel family. Thank you, everyone. First up on the agenda, approval of minutes from September 9th, 2024, what is the Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, could I just, before you...
Mr. Ruder.
...could you just go through the Chairman's note about facilitating the meeting with the FAA?
That wasn't on here, sorry.
Or maybe the Secretary.
Yeah, it was on, alright.
It's right here.
Oh, at the top.
Yep.
Get back.
Sorry.
So, this meeting is being recorded, without objection, the Chair of the BOS will facilitate item six, with the understanding that the FAA Chair will chair the FAA Committee concurrently, including any allowable discussions, questions, business, motions requested or required under item six. Without objection, and I apologize. Now, approve a minute, September 9th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, except the minutes is written.
Motion made by Mr. Landry.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions, concerns, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Citizens' comments, anybody wishing to speak on an issue that does not require a vote of the Board, Mr. Wheelock.
Good evening. I know you guys get a lot of grief all the time, but I think when something good happens in town, I think you guys should be recognized. I've been walking almost every day down at the rail trail down on Mill Road, and I kind of did a survey to see how people like the new paving and everything that'd be done, and I think it's been an overwhelming success. The usage down there is up tremendously, sometimes you can't even get a parking place down there. So, there's a lot of women with carriages, a lot of women or families with kids with little bikes, they wouldn't have been able to use that down there until now. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Board for getting that done, and I want to see if I can lobby to get the other section done from the paper mill to the salvage town line.
Oh, Mr. Gasky's here, we could ask him during this.
I just, I just want to point out one other thing, I was looking on my phone, and it was an article that came up with the 20 best rail trails in Massachusetts, and the Quinaberg River Rail Trail was number 20. So, maybe there's only 21 in the whole state, I don't know, but, and then that was, that article was written before it was paved, so I would think you guys have gone up a couple of notches.
I'm gonna say it's a, I'm gonna say it's a hidden gem, otherwise we'd be higher up.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else? Seeing none. Appointments, Norma Fromannick, Council on Aging, term to expire at 6:30, 2027, is Norma present? Is anybody present, presenting on behalf of the Council on Aging? Mr. Ruder, could you give us an update?
I believe that Norma needs to just, her appointment needs to be ratified, I think she's been down there serving, and somehow it fell through the cracks. Am I correct on that, Olivia?
Mr. Chairman, Deb Johnson, the Council on Aging Director, reached out to me and asked if Norma had ever been appointed by the Selectmen, it looks like she had submitted her paperwork a few months back, and nothing ever came of the appointment, so tonight is just making everything official.
Any further questions for the TA or the Assistant TA? Hearing on the Board, what's the tenet motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Norma Fromannick to the Council on Aging, term to expire at 6:30, 27.
Effective immediately?
Effective immediately.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Shane's, any further discussion, questions, or concerns, hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, and we welcome Norma to the Council on Aging. Public business, we have a revision to the communications policy, defer to the Town Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, this has been on the agenda a few times, we've, we've put it off to give the Board a selectmen and the opportunity to review it, ask any questions that they may have, and it's come up again, this has been vetted and suggested by Town Council, I put it up on the screen as a reminder, and it's up to the Board to make a decision, or if you want more time to review, we could do that, too.
Questions from the Board to the Town Administrator. Hearing none, what's the Board's pleasure on the revision, on the Town Council recommended, revision to the communications policy?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the revision to the communications policy, as written.
Motion made by Mr. Landry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Sigenovich, anybody in the public with questions? All in favor, state aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Ruder and Town Council, for this update. Dudley Grange, number 163, parking waiver, request permission for parking waiver for annual Apple Festival on Saturday, October 5th, 2024, from 10:00 to 3:00 on Center Road, Mr. Ruder.
I'll defer to, well, actually, Mr. Chairman, we've already granted a parking waiver for another participant in the event, I believe it was a Historical Commission?
The Black Tavern Craft Fair.
So, this would be redundant, there's, there's already been a waiver granted, it's for the same event, it's just another entity, so it's really the pleasure of the Board in terms of how they want to address this.
Before I call to a vote, anybody from the Grange like to come up and get some free publicity?
Good evening, I'm Karen Gillan, here on behalf of Dudley Grange, I was unaware that, I'm assuming that was the Black Tavern?
Yes.
I was unaware, we, we kind of have to get our, our stuff on the same page, so that we're not, you know, duplicating efforts, but it's basically the same request.
Right, and now, and don't they, I seem to recall, a couple of years back, Mr. Baznet came in, and isn't it intentional, they're the same day, to generate?
Yes.
The traffic flow back and forth?
Yeah, it's just that, you know, we, we each kind of do our own thing, and I think we need to collaborate a little bit more, so we're not duplicating efforts.
Nope.
But, yeah, it's the same, it's basically the same request.
So, your waivers from 10:00 to 3:00, what's the actual time of the Apple Festival? Is it 10:00 to 3:00?
It's 10:00 to 3:00, we do have vendors who will come in early, earlier, starting at 8 o'clock for us, I'm not sure what time the tavern starts, but vendors will come in, and they'll need to, you know, a lot of times they'll pull up on our green and unload, and sometimes they might pull up against the, you know, the, the side of our, our side of the street to unload, and then they go and move their cars, but...
Okay.
We do have musicians, so we like to reserve space in front of our Grange lawn, to make it easier for them to get their instruments out and back in again, into their cars, because it's, you know, the, the first band that's going to be playing is the, the Old Fiddler's Club over Rhode Island, and they've been around since 1929, I think, but anyway, many of them are very elderly, so it's difficult for them to get those various instruments out in their, their little, I sound like an idiot, but I don't know, not a musical person, so whatever their stand is, that they put their music on, you know, just the stuff like that, unloading, it just makes it more convenient and safer for them.
Right, right, excellent. Do you have any questions for the Grange? So, we don't have to take a vote, because you've already allowed it, so we're just gonna wish you well, and...
Well, thank you.
Hopefully it's a beautiful day.
Thank you, we need it.
Yes.
Have a good evening.
Take care. Next up is the Recreation Commission, requesting permission to hold the Halloween Spooktacular on Thursday, October 24th, from 4:00 to 6:00 at the back parking lot at the Dudley Municipal Center. Jen Canoye presenting.
Good evening, I'm here on behalf of the Recreation Commission, looking for permission to use the back parking lot, to block off the back entrance, and to allow the parade to come up from the library. I did reach out to the police, I will be in communication with fire and highway, as well as the library, I just wanted to get permission before I started going any further.
What year would this be, Jen, like the fifth annual?
Fifth year, yes, yep.
Any questions for Jen Canoye from the Board? Anybody in the public have any questions, except to wish them well? Hearing none, Gerald attain a motion to allow permission to hold the Halloween Spooktacular Thursday, October 24th, 4:00 to 6:00 at the back parking lot of the Dudley Municipal Complex.
So moved.
Mr. Johnson, second, Mr. Landry. Any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Excuse me?
Further comment?
Further comment?
I didn't have a question earlier, I just had a comment now. Great event, well attended, the kids love it, thank you for doing it again.
Thank you, thank you. If anyone would like to help out, feel free, just reach out to me, we're always looking for volunteers, and you do not have to come in costume, but costumes are encouraged, so...
That could really be a spooktacular topic. Any further questions from the Board? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, thank you, I'll be back for the Christmas one in, in a little while.
Yeah, be here before you know it. Sex joint meeting of the FAA, Mr. Mayard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the FAA will call its meeting to order at 6:47, I believe. One order of business we have is, we have the minutes for the May 30th, or May 20th meeting, that we need to approve, so I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Alright, any changes to the minutes? Alright, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that's all our business, Mr. Chairman, so I'll yield back to you.
Yeah. Oh, Jen, you're a little shaky.
You got it.
6B, brief overview of draft requests and warrant articles for the final special town meeting, Department Heads Town Administrator, FAA Board of Selectmen, take any other action relative thereto, Mr. Ruder.
Mr. Chairman, we, we have the opportunity to go with the initial draft supplemental budget, and some of the articles that are on the warrant tonight, I was thinking maybe we could start with some of the articles, I know there's some Department Heads here that have some additional supplemental requests that may want to speak on those, and we also have something scheduled for Thursday, a follow-up meeting for those things that we can't get to tonight. So, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if you want to start with the Excel spreadsheet for the supplemental, or go right into the financial articles?
If you want to go into the warrant articles, is that...
Sure.
In order to close those out, first? So, Mr. Administrator, do you want to start with Article 3, and work on the amended budget after, or...
Sure, we can, we can do that. This is cosponsored by Rich and I, these are unpaid bills, which is something I believe we've become familiar with, I can speak to my two unpaid bills, I believe they were both from KP Law, one was received on June 21st, and one was received, dated June 30th, and received after that, so it didn't make it into the, into the final payment schedule. So, my total is 1,061 and 360, it looks like we also have an unpaid from Staples, and I'm not sure, was that administration as well?
Yes.
And then Rich had the top two, I think, Boston Mutual, was it just Boston Mutual? And Webco. I'm not sure which, I'm not sure exactly what department the Webco bill came from, but that was submitted by Rich as well, it was an unpaid bill.
Just one question, Mr. Administrator, I know we did, we did do our transfers for unpaid bills, why did these come in so late?
I don't know, we, we sent out several memos asking everyone to, I'll have our vendors to submit their bills, it's just when it came in.
Okay.
I think we, we sent out two or three reminders before we closed out the air.
Okay.
In anticipation of that very question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Should I keep going, Mr.?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want to.
My turn, I thought Mike was going to do, you can, no, it's great.
The next article, again, this is a rough draft, so the articles aren't numbered yet. This is our standard request to deposit a certain amount of stabilization into, a certain amount of free cash into one or both of the stabilization accounts, we don't know what that certified number's going to be yet, but that's a standard request, when we have a better idea of the number, we'll populate it and have a discussion as to what the recommendation is.
Do we have an estimated date in the MO?
Not yet, no. Date, I would say...
Do you want to ask Sarah to come up, so the public can...
Yes, Sarah, do you mind just coming up to the podium? Thank you.
As she's on her way up, the last day for our discussion, the last meeting for the, for the warrant articles is October 3rd, so we'll have to have a number by then, October
So, right now, I'm in the process of completing the final journal entries and closing the books for the year, from that point on, we'll be working on the required documentation and reports to the State Department of Revenue for the free cash certification, so I really can't, don't have a number yet.
Okay.
The next one, Mr. Chairman, is to see if the town will vote to accept provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 4013, de-establishing a reserve fund hereby known as compensated retirement reserve, for the future payment of accrued liabilities to any employee of full-time officer of the town, whose salary is derived from the general fund appropriation, upon the termination of the employee's full-time, or the full-time officer's employment, or take any other action relative thereto, and what that is, is the draft language, to establish an account, and this is on the spreadsheet, the amount is on the spreadsheet, to prepare for the, for future retirements. You may recall that we kind of scrambled at the end of last year and beginning of this year to fund a few...
So, is it...
Long-term employee retirements, that's the buyout of vacation...
Right, vacation and...
And that sort of thing that we're required to do.
Yeah, kind of, kind of snuck up on us.
It's just it makes more sense to throw some money at it, year after year, as opposed to try to scramble, to cobble it together, when a retirement is announced.
You have an amount in your supplemental?
We do, what was it, 60? A portion will be used this year for anticipated, in anticipated retirement this year, from the Fire Department, and there will be a balance remaining to establish the account, and then year after year, we'll work with Rich and with Sarah, and try to project a certain amount of money on a regular basis to deposit. Any questions?
Mr. Administrator, that's the $65,000...
That's right, and that will pay the final retirement that we're aware of...
Disappeared.
And it will fund the account with a nominal amount of money.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Administrator?
Yes.
Do, the language that we were kind of debating on, in the, the buyback, the sick time buyback, is that, you got any plans on making that clearer, at all, or...
So, we've had internal discussions, we, we, I met with, Olivia and I met with Sarah and Rich last Wednesday, that's one of the things we brought up, and I believe you're talking about, we wanted to provide an example in the personal handbook, to show exactly how the calculation is made, in terms of retirement or separation of service buyout, and we're definitely going to do that, we'll propose that. Next one is to see if the town will vote contingent upon the passage of Article Remains to Be Seen, in the 2024 October 21st Special Town Meeting warrant to deposit the amount of $65,000 certified in free cash into the compensated retirement reserve, so that is, that's the bookend for the above article that we just talked about, first we have to establish the account by vote, and then we fund it in the next article, that's the $65,000 to fund that above article.
Any questions more on it, funding it?
I'm not sure if Lisa is here tonight, does she want to speak on the next one? Okay, we'll, we'll have her come in on Thursday, Mr. Chairman, and that's a, we'll hold off on that one, the next one is for the Recreation Commission, and I believe Jen is going to speak on that.
Hello, good, Jen.
Okay. So, bear with me, let me, so we're looking to see, the article is if the town will borrow a sum of $704,410 to make repairs and expand the usable area of the upper fields located at the Richard Carmignani Senior Memorial Playground. The reason why we're requesting that amount is we have applied for a... The reason why we're requesting that amount is we have applied for a grant, but the grant, we are not sure when it will be awarded. So what we're looking to do is borrow the full amount. If we do get the grant, it would be the amount of, bear with me one second, $496,650. And that would be repaid back, and then we'd only be responsible for the $212,850.
So we're asking, obviously, to borrow the money in anticipation of the grant. If the grant does not come through, we won't borrow the money. If it does come through, we'll borrow the money. We will spend the, that amount of money to construct the playground that we've been talking about for quite some time. You may remember, we had that public meeting where the kids came in and went through all the different options that were available. And the grant will pay 500,000. The remainder of that balance would be paid through the borrowing over, over the course of time. There's different ways we could, we could pay that off. We could use a certain amount of free cash. We could use capital improvement stabilization year after year and fund that accordingly. It's really up to where we stand at that point, but it's not, it's not a heavy lift for a 15 or 20-year payoff time, $200,000. I believe it's less than the original article that was proposed and passed over a few years ago at the town meeting, which I believe was about 30, 340 grand.
Any questions on that article?
When will you know about the park grant? Because it's been, I mean, it was submitted for a long time ago, right?
Yes.
I think we'll probably, no, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I was, we were hoping to hear prior to the town meeting.
We may be getting an announcement pretty soon.
Yeah.
I'm told.
Hopefully.
Maybe even by the end of this week. But again, we're not going to borrow the money if we don't have that source of revenue from the grant to pay it off.
Do we have any fundraising that was, would offset that 212?
We do. We have $30,000 left from the fundraising that was spearheaded by the Dudley Women's Club. 10% of that is, is built into the request for a contingency amount. That's, of course, if it goes over budget or they run into some unforeseen circumstances, including any price increases. But we're pretty locked in on that amount right now. And there's nothing to prohibit us from having an ongoing fundraising event to pay it off as well.
And that is something that's been discussed at the Recreation Commission meetings, is possible ways to, outside of us fundraising, doing fundraisers towards this.
If we do receive the grant and it is grant, and we do get the grant, are we obligated to follow through once the grant is awarded?
If they give us the money, I think we are, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So if it is awarded, we're looking at, trying to come up with a couple hundred thousand for this?
We're going to borrow the money to begin with. It's probably going to be a two-year construction cycle by the time it's completed.
Treasury would be the one to talk to, but you're talking about a 15 or 20-year, no?
We'd have to ask Rich, just how long we could borrow the money for. We could, you know, if we give ourselves a breathing room, as, you know, things improve, as money becomes available, we could accelerate it, accelerate the payoff. Rich often bundles it and does that sort of thing, but we could certainly ask him to give us a better explanation than that.
Are we potentially talking about debt excluding?
I would, I wouldn't propose that. I don't think that amount needs to be debt excluded.
Any questions? Good.
Thank you.
Nobody from the crowd? Thank you, Jen.
The next one is a placeholder, Mr. Chairman, for the Water Department. I think we're waiting for final numbers. I don't know if there's anyone here that wants to speak on that.
Jen, you want to say the page?
I sent you the, the final numbers Thursday morning. I sent them to both you and Olivia.
So those represent the final numbers?
Correct, the breakdown and everything.
And I guess we can move forward with a discussion on that with whomever is here to represent the article.
You want me to talk about it since I, okay. So the Water Department is looking for, to take $100,000 from retained earnings. And I apologize, I don't have the specific breakdown. A certain amount to overtime, a certain amount to standby, and then the three water primary operator, secondary operator, and water operator to their pay. And this is due to the new union negotiations that are going on. They, the raise, any raises that will become will be backdated with their overtime, standby, and their regular salary.
And as Jen mentioned, Mr. Chairman, there's just the ongoing negotiations that have not come to an agreement yet, that we haven't obviously proposed to the Board of Selectmen for approval, vote in the road to approve. This is anticipation of it going longer than we anticipated.
Okay. Any questions?
Just, just one question. This is just transferring money into these accounts now. It's not in addition to the budget we've already passed, right?
It, it's in addition to the, our overtime, overtime line item, all of these because of the amount of overtime that's been going on and the increase in the pay. It was not budgeted enough.
So this is, this is a budget overage?
This is us taking money from retained, our retained earnings, correct, because of things that have occurred and the restructuring of the Water Department positions through the union and the pays.
So Jen, I thought we were told by the chairman, who's usually here, that the restructuring wasn't going to.
So.
He was told there were just title changes to be in line with what the state required.
From, and this is just, and George, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm only talking about what I know, sorry. Is that they are new titles, and the pays will be going up to match the title and the responsibilities. One is still has the same rights. We have to have a primary treatment operator, and now we have to have a primary distribution operator mandated by the state. We did not have that, so that, those responsibilities are different than what the secondary operator was doing, so there is a pay difference. Am I correct with that? Thank you.
So how many people, maybe George knows, or you know, how many people on, you say primary? Is that like one person?
That's one person's a primary, one person, one person is primary treatment, one person would be primary distribution, and then there is a water operator.
It's a terminology that the D E P are using for sustaining type of responsibilities and liabilities.
Correct.
So if you have one primary.
Primary, because you're going to, you have a primary distribution.
George, can you come up, please, for just a second?
Come on.
Sorry. My question's going to be, if you have one primary and he's out, what do you do?
The other primary covers this.
Primary is just a position, but more people can hold that certification?
Yeah, you, they all can basically do the same jobs. One is a little bit higher in, with consulting on a telephone or, or near them would assist in certain things, because not everybody knows everything. But these positions now have to have a status of being a primary in a distribution-type role, which engages in all sorts of things in the distribution system and responsibilities in that system for water, water control, things like that. The other one is a treatment, a primary treatment, and that's with all the chemicals, doses, chemical feed pumps, the whole works there, the whole water treatment realm. That's the hierarchy one right there. And then just down the ladder, you've got another operator who can fill in to a degree, or I, I'm not allowed to really do it, but the superintendent's not supposed to be involved with that, but I can fill in if I have to. But there's, there's step downs to fill-ins for these roles. If somebody has an emergency, whether they're out, whether they're on vacation, or whatever. But we've, we've just established all this recently because of the new treatment center. And now the roles have changed. The responsibilities are way off the charts, and the liabilities are way off the charts. So these people are going to, being in these roles need to be compensated in these roles and to perform these roles. Oh, they'll go elsewhere. We barely holding on to what we have. We're already down three, two guys. So we need the guys we have to maintain the system we have. So that's, that's, that's why it's, it's difficult to explain in the last minute, but that's basically what these are. These are all state-required roles, and have to be identified as that.
Any questions for the superintendent, admin? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mike, sorry?
So I just, just trying to make sure I understand, and I have no objection to any of the transfers or anything, I understand you get the bills, but we're two and a half months into our fiscal year, and we're already hundreds, thousands short of what we thought?
By the end of the year, we will be, correct.
Okay. Like, it's all unforeseen, has occurred. This whole game with the treatment center and things have been unforeseen. And now with the new system setup for the, for the crew, that's again, that's been dragged on a bit. So, you know, it just, it is what it is. Trying to get everything nailed down correctly. Thanks.
Thank you. A good time, though.
Good, Mr. Chairman. Next one is a road acceptance based on a betterment. Need to make sure we have that on the, Olivia's working with our interim town planner to make sure that the road layout is before the Board of Selectmen, before that happens. Again, that's one of these situations where a betterment was sought, and the work has been done, and now it's time for straight acceptance. The same applies for Tobin Farms Estates. I'm not sure where that stands. We put it in as a placeholder. I think that St. Anthony's going to be ready to go, and we'll, I believe that there was a holdover from last year, Tobin Farms, but we'll have better advice for the, for the board as that, as we come closer to that street layout. The next one is for the Police Department, which is a bylaw amendment for animal control. That, I'm going to ask the police chief to come up and talk to the boards about it a little bit.
It seems like a lot, but it's actually not. All we're doing is just changing the fine amounts, just to reflect what the state law is. But for the most part, we're leaving everything the same.
Any questions for the chief? Objection to moving on? Mr. Ruda?
Nope.
That's slow.
Moving on. It's a long warrant with a lot of bylaw changes. But I don't want anybody to get nervous by the number of pages we have here. The next one is the solicitors' bylaw, which we, the chief and I discussed that we're going to leave off the, we're going to leave off the agenda this time around for the purposes of not overwhelming everyone, but it's a very small change. And you may recall that the solicitors' bylaw passed in May of last, of this year at the town meeting, and after review by the Attorney General's Office and advice by town council, they recommended that we change. Hours of operation, it shall be unlawful for any person to peddle a solicit before the hour of 8:30 a.m. of any day or after the hour of, it originally passed at 7:30. They recommended the change being to nine o'clock, because there's been unsuccessful case law that has not been, hasn't been able to defend the 7:30 cutoff. So they recommended that nine o'clock change. Other than that, chief, I think it remains pretty much intact?
Yeah, it still, it puts a lot of regulations, which we never had, so nine o'clock if somebody, unfortunately, we wanted 7:30, but like the town administrator said, we were recommended that to go with the nine o'clock to prevent any issues down the road if anybody wants to go after the town, so nine o'clock, but it still gives us a lot of regulations that we never had before in that bylaw.
Chief, and I know you were talking before, a little background, there's been problems in other towns, right, with some of this?
Yes, so, for instance, I believe there's a couple towns that have some pushy salesmen that won't take a no for an answer. If the public complains about it to the Police Department, which regulates it, we can lift the permit, revoke the permit for that solicitor, and they have the right to appeal in front of the board, but it gives us a little bit of leverage versus what we had before, which was nothing in place.
Questions for the chief on this one? Gary?
Question, chief. If, if someone does not want solicitors to come to their home, is there a list that they can put their name on, or should they just have a no soliciting sign, and does this no soliciting sign have any teeth to it?
I, I believe in this, the bylaw, we do have something about a signage. So if you have a sign out there, and if it would be conduct prohibited. So if somebody violates it, you report it to the police. If we have too many complaints, we can revoke their permit to do business in Dudley.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thanks, chief. Thanks, chief.
Excellent, Mr. Chairman. We all remember Jeff Murray, right?
Yes, welcome back, Mr. Murray. Don't be so excited.
So we brought Jeff back in because he had worked in the past on getting our MS4, which is our stormwater reporting, completed, and he's done a great job at that. And we brought him back in to help us get the reporting completed this year. And as part of that reporting, we needed to update the existing stormwater bylaw to reflect the new standards of the EPA. And Jeff worked with the EPA and several other towns to get that done. So maybe we should let Jeff take over from here and explain what's happening.
Jeff, you got the floor?
Thanks. So basically, there were some changes made, made to the existing bylaw, which complies with the MS4 requirements. There's some areas that are redacted, changing the area responsibility to a stormwater committee, which would be formed, and the members of that would be the conservation agent, the health agent, highway superintendent, town planner, and, and water and sewer superintendents. So that, that committee would oversee any of the stormwater regulations and the day-to-day requirements for inspections. And this encompasses the MS4, the N I P T's permitting, which is a EPA-issued permit, and also the new requirements of the EPA for construction and post-construction inspections. So there's a lot of minutia here, basically, but it just stalls out what the, what those requirements are, and these are EPA, these are mandated by the EPA or the D E P. And this, the stormwater committee will help streamline things where you have day-to-day employees overseeing this stuff instead of being shifted back and forth between the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. And they don't, there's requirements for licensing or certifications for the person that's going out and doing the field work to do the inspections. And the current conservation agent, who would be a member of the committee, but a non, non-voting member of the committee, is certified in these, for these inspections. So it basically, it essentially work similar to the way that the current process works for planning, where there's a third-party review done. Those fees are paid by the, by the contractor or the person that's utilizing the. Those fees are paid by the, by the contractor or the person that's utilizing the services. So all of those inspections wouldn't be picked up in the general, general funds. They'd be paid by whoever is doing the construction work. Again, these are, these are requirements. One of the other, one of the other changes that had been made is gives the stormwater committee the ability to adopt or set new rules and regulations outside of the bylaw to comply with any of the new regulations that come along by the DEP or the EPA. So it facilitates things a lot, a lot better to stay in compliance. And there is a risk of, you know, some type of penalty assessment or something similar to that if those aren't complied with. So again, I've been in communication with the EPA. I actually received an email as recently as five, 10 minutes of five tonight. They've, they've reviewed the bylaw and the changes that were made, and they agree that it complies with whatever the regulations would be. So it's, it's just important for the Board to communicate or to the, to the town meeting when the time comes that, you know, these aren't, these aren't things that the towns dreamed up on their own to try and make things more difficult for people to exercise their ability to develop property or whatever. It's, they're, they're actually mandated, mandated policies by the EPA that, that are required to be put in place. And there's, there's financial impact if, if that doesn't happen, so. That's pretty much it.
Excellent. Any questions, Mr. Murray? Mr. Mayor? People in the public? Rudig? Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it for the, for the draft warrant, Mr. Chairman. So we could probably move right on to the supplemental requests. While that's, while that's coming up, Olivia made a correction while we were sitting here to the printout that the FAA received.
Mr. Chairman, there is an error on the printed spreadsheet. It's double counting the $65,000 for the retirement liabilities. I have that listed both in the warrant as an article, which it should be, and then also on the departmental request, which it should not be listed there. So you'll see the total at the bottom of the spreadsheet where it says total departmental requests. That should be $235,762.52. Warrant article should be $80,000 with a grand total of $315,762.52. It's been changed up here on the version that's displaying on the screen.
Thank you.
We're looking at the supplemental budget dated 9/20, right?
Should, yeah, it should say at the top, account number, item, departmental request.
Yep.
Source of funding. I can keep going, Mr. Chairman, with my stuff, or we can?
I'll roll.
Have the department heads come up?
Those, and then we'll have them come up?
So the source of funding column D is all TBD. We don't know the free cash number yet, so the, and the sources of funding have yet to be identified. The first item is the regulatory and compliance requirement for the Eagle Drive Cap landfill project, which includes ongoing testing, maintenance of point-of-entry filtration systems, bottled water, cost of LSPs and that, and that share that we're doing with Gentex. And that's $132,000. We received a quote from our Weston and Sampson LSP. Depending on how that free cash comes forward, there may have to be like a capital improvement stabilization amount or a portion, or it may have to be that amount, but we'll see what, we'll see where we stand in the coming weeks. Retirement liabilities, Olivia got rid of that. Jen and George spoke about the Watersaw Enterprise amount, and that's been entered into the article now. So we have a specific amount on the, on the draft warrant that we just went through. The merit pool is the article that was passed over at the last town meeting by town meeting vote. I'm proposing and I'm going to put that back into the supplemental budget under the colon line item. There was someone who was interested in doing a citizen's petition to bring it back, and I've advised that person that it'll be, it will be included in the, in the supplemental budget as a form of line item. Out of district student transportation. We have one student that we budgeted for the tuition amount at the time of the May town meeting, which I believe was 29.5 at the time. And that, we didn't have a, the transportation number yet. We weren't sure on the, the source of the transportation, what the cost would be. But that's the cost, the actual cost to transport that student for the school year from Douglas to Walpole, round trip every day, plus the reimbursement cost for her mileage for her to be driven from her house to Douglas. The total was $28,627.20. We're required under law to pay that amount. Olivia's done some work with DESI, and we found out that there is a reimbursement amount. Transportation is reimbursable at the amount of 18% at the end of the fiscal year, so we'll get a portion of that money back. But again, that's the ongoing Chapter 74 chase that we have every year in terms of seeing if it's been properly funded at the State House level, and it hasn't been. So we're only eligible for that 18% amount of reimbursement. The rest comes out of the general fund. See if there's anything more from me. I'll just have Olivia do the HR expenses, 'cause that's where her wheelhouse, and then we can move on.
Mr. Chairman, the HR expenses, you'll see I'm requesting an additional $1,200. That's because my original quest, or the department's original request, was $2,400. The final version of the FY25 budget, cut that in half to only $1,200. I've currently used about 65% of the budget so far, and that's been all on pre-employment physicals or DOT-related physicals through Harrington Copper Care. So I'm requesting more money so we don't run out of that and are unattractive to provide funding for that.
Questions to the citizen town administrator? Mr. Mayor?
We have a question a minute.
All right, thank you, Olivia.
And then finally, the conservation planning clerk salary was, we noticed and reviewing was slightly underfunded for the, that's Ora's part-time position where she does that double duty. With the, with the exit of Bill Scanlon at the beginning of the year, she, she's put in some additional hours. And so we have to make sure we have enough money, sufficient money, to, to fund that part-time position. So $4,500 will bring us there.
Mike?
Vacation buyback, I believe, is funded at $100, and we've applied that to, that's generally used in general for vacation buyback under different employment contracts. We've applied that this year to one or two of our retiring employees. I believe Michelle left on July 1st and Deb shortly thereafter. So we've used that amount, that amount of money. We'd like to repopulate that account in case anything comes up over the course of the year.
Questions? Mike?
Good, we're good? Next one is education for accounting. I could have Sarah walk up, but I can just as easily say it for her. She's, she's taken on some additional courses that she started. One of them is the UMS 101 course that's highly recommended for town accountants. Is, this is her first time as a municipal town accountant. So it's pretty critical that you take that course, and that's the cost involved in that. And finally, the help desk amount of $6,000. We've, we've spent, we've spent more money on help desk because of some unforeseen IT issues that came up at the beginning of the year than we originally planned. So I'm, I'm asking for an additional $6,000 to pay for help desk services. And that's when something goes down, whether it's a network issue, whether it's a printer issue, we have the ability to send an email, they create a ticket at the help desk, it's outsourced, and they come here and they either, they either come, come here in person or remotely help us troubleshoot the problem. As we get Amanda Gage more acclimated into her new role taking over for Debbie from MIS, she's begun taking on some of those additional duties as well, which does not come out of this amount, that comes out of her regular salary. So the smaller things that she's dealing with in the coordination internally, particularly with that grant, the cybersecurity grant that we spoke about a few weeks ago, she's really been spearheading that. So some of the, some of the remote tasks still have to be farmed out to a help desk, an outside source.
Questions on those last two?
Good. Assess our expenses and assess our education. That $1,100 did not get put into the May budget, and she asked me if we would try to replace that in October for the purposes intended in the description. So we've put those back in. The OPEB trust, we'll wait for Rich to be here, he can speak on that to see if, he concurs with adding another $9,900 into that. It's currently funded at $100. That's our ongoing retirement liability that we didn't fund in May, but will be pretty large by the time we get into 2034, 2035. Next one is fiber maintenance. So the regional dispatch, and you may recall this discussion, Mr. Chairman, the regional dispatch director received a large grant for equipment changeover from digital, from analog to digital to replace some of our radio repeaters and, and radio backhaul equipment, buying new radios and that sort of thing. And the reason that we need to do that is because the backhaul, particularly in Dudley, when I say backhaul, that's how the signal, the radio signals are picked up by the repeaters and sent back to dispatch and sent around to voting machines that actually rebroadcast those signals. But it, it all runs on carpet lines. So if you have a fire call or an EMS call or a police call in West Dudley, and they're using their radios, it goes to a repeater and it comes back to headquarters on a, through a repeater on carpet lines. Verizon no longer supports carpet lines. They're all phased out. It's all other, other modes of communications. And that means that if we have a carpet line go down, our public safety radios are in jeopardy of working because Verizon doesn't service them anymore. So in, in addition to the big grant that the regional dispatch was able to get, we're able to replace the carpet lines with fiber lines for the strict purpose of public safety. And it's an ongoing maintenance cost of, trying to think of what the exact monthly cost is. I believe this is a six-month cost included in this for $9,800. But that's an ongoing maintenance cost. And we've always planned to have the communications tower that's being installed, the cell tower that's being installed. If a Schofield Ave makes these payments so it doesn't come out of the tax base, it's not quite there yet. So we need to get ourselves to the end of the fiscal year to be able to maintain these lines under the service agreement. And then, and then we'll get to the point eventually where we're receiving payments on that cell tower, and that will take up communications for communications, that will take up the cost of ongoing maintenance. The reason that we're not, in, in running the numbers, the reason that we're not letting things break and then calling someone in to do it if a fiber line goes down, is it would be astronomical to do that if we have an ongoing maintenance agreement. It makes a lot more sense, not only for routine maintenance, but for emergency repairs. So this is, this has been, that's the more cost-effective way to go.
So this goes into the presentation or the explanation you and I got from Director Linsky, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, I don't expect this to be an ongoing general fund cost. We have a source of funding identified for that, which can pay well into the future for that ongoing maintenance. The next item is a request from the Treasurer Collector for a part-time clerk. I'll wait for him to be here to discuss that. We can, we can schedule that for Thursday.
So a question, Mr. Chairman, on that one. I know one time we were waiting for a job description to come up from downstairs. Did we ever get a job description the last time?
I think we got to the point of, of a job description in a posting, and we received resumes on the position and applicants.
No action was ever taken, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'll talk about that Thursday. Thank you.
The next one is a, is something that?
Library director?
Library director can come up and discuss.
Hi, everybody. So we had an unexpected vacancy in our youth service position this year. It was budgeted at 48.5 for FY25 based on education and experience level. Unfortunately, the position is now open. So to get that position to the benchmark that the town has in place, I'm requesting $9,500. We've had some great candidates, candidates that are knowledgeable about early literacy and language skills, pop culture, educational trends, communication skills, the whole shebang that have, potentially will have their master credentials in place, which will help us looking towards the future and the succession, you know, succession planning at the library and what types of roles this person can step into. This position was budgeted in FY24 at 53,320. So it was cut, so I just need to bring it a little higher so we can get some good candidates in place. Also, benefit of doing that this year is this money will get us to our MAR, our material, or excuse me, our required appropriated fund for FY26, so I won't have to be looking for additional monies next fiscal year.
You have that in writing?
Yeah, I can put that in writing. It hits the formula.
No, you know, we've, we've been well-versed in the last couple of years on the formula and payback amounts. Any questions from Mr. Messier? Or Messier? Anybody from the crowd? Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I support this request because the current salary is not indicative of the market at all for a, a youth services librarian. It's an important position. It's the number two in the library, and, you know, we've got to get a little bit closer to the market rate in order to attract some talent. So I definitely support this amount.
All right, too, I want to just congratulate, thank Nicole. I've been down there once or twice a week, it seems like recently, and between herself and her existing staff, that they really pinch it on that side of the library. My grandkids love to go there. Had to miss the beat, I know that. So thank your staff and yourself.
Thanks, it's great to hear. It's what we're striving for, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Bottom line number has been reduced by 65 to the 315, 762, 52, instead of 380?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. And then, of course, Mr. Chairman, we received two citizen petitions, ones to amend the town administrator bylaw, the other is to amend the person, the existing personnel bylaw, personal committee bylaw. I'm gonna put those on the agenda for Thursday to review and discuss.
So I just have a question or concern, and I'm not sure what to say first. So I'm gonna ask the Board's permission that we have the town administrator reach out to town council concerning some of these changes. I think council can speak a little better on the direction that, that puts the town on when it comes to like best practices and/or potential liabilities. on when it comes to like best practices and/or potential liabilities. I mean, volunteerism is great, we always ask for it. The original town administrator by law was passed when Mr. Valcunis was our town administrator, it got amended in '21, I believe, recommendations by council. Hopefully, the petitioner would come and speak before us with his concerns, or their concerns, I should say, it was a sizable signature amount because it's a special town meeting, but what, without objection from the board, I'd like to have Mr. Ruda engage council to either be in person or to give us some, hopefully some guidance and feedback that everybody accepts with an open mind. Go with it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll ask Labor Council, Mark Terry to come in because he's, he kind of spearheaded the original bylaws and can speak probably back to that. I'll also ask Olivia and Deb to make sure that some of the grants that we've done in the past, that we've kind of structured our HR and our personal directors' position around is reposted and put to the top of some of our social media accounts so they can see what those recommendations are that we've used as kind of our guidance to this, to this point. And I would encourage anyone who has, may have signed a petition but has not reached out to me or, as far as I know, any member of the board for further information, to at least come and listen to what Labor Council states about it and, you know, maybe ask some questions about it before we reverse a vote of the previous town meeting.
Right, I mean, I think that's important. Those reports that we had done, the Collins Center, the Abram Cell we studied, we had DPW study, everything, they were all, they were all important, they were, they were generated through our town administrator's office for the most part, grant-funded, didn't cost, well, the DPW study was not, the other two were grant-funded. And again, I encourage people to at least read the summation, if there's a summation page, I believe there is on Collins, right? But read it if you have time, but at least educate yourself or come and ask your questions. We just had the DEP in here, it was a well-attended meeting, let the professionals explain. All you got to do is look at the surrounding towns. We, most towns have an assistant town administrator, and like in Webster, for example, I know she's the HR contact person over there. We have things moving forward for a reason. Like I said, the Collins study was a big one. I just have, ask people, take a look at that report if you have a chance, social media or contact our office, they can tell you how to get it and just make an informed decision as nobody has come and asked us in person how we evolved to where we're at. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Siggenevich has been around long enough with the Collins report, wasn't things that we just arbitrarily as a board presented the town meeting and got passed. So it would just be nice. Mr. Wheelock?
There's a question?
Sure. All right, back at the town meeting, there was an article that was voted down to give raises to the non-union employees in town. Can I just ask why that hasn't been brought up again this year?
It's that employee merit pool one that he spoke about.
What is it called?
Employee merit pool.
Oh.
That's what it was then and now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Again, that's another one, folks, it got voted down, there was a lot of undercurrent and, not quite undercurrent, again, educate, please try to educate yourself as much as possible on a vote, don't believe everything you read or hear, come with a question or ask the question at the time, but the public hearing is where you get your information. Town meeting is hard to do when you're trying to get an article through and there's a lot of stuff that wasn't true that night, it wouldn't be true tonight either, just, please just educate yourself to the best possible. Any other board members want to comment? Mr. Mayhart?
No.
So Jonathan, you need us to make a motion to accept the supplemental or just, we're not going to do the, that's just for the warrant, we're not going to do that.
I'll have it, I'll have it, well, we'll have it in better format for Thursday as it should be formatted with a draft warrant.
Excellent. I want to thank everyone that helped get their articles in in a timely manner and all the explanations tonight we received from our staff, I just really appreciate it by us folks up here. Ready to go on the supplemental? All right, next up, we have town administrator. No, I know, I gotta go back, sorry. Town administrator's report, hold on, we set the date for the meeting of September 26, 2024, joint meeting with the FAA, I believe.
I just put that in there, Mr. Chairman, to confirm that we're good for 6:30?
Um, are we good for 6:30 on Thursday? All right. Yeah, that's good.
Trying to praise it and move for everybody. Yes, yes.
Again, folks, that'd be the chance to come in and listen and have your concerns heard. Next up, town administrator evaluation, town administrator.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if we're done with the financial articles, we can, yeah, we can adjourn our meeting if you want.
All right.
Objection, so adjourn? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, favor say aye. All right, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, folks, we'll see you Thursday, hopefully. Next up?
Mr. Chairman, per the vote of the planning board, we're working toward a regional option for sharing a town planner. Last week, we did a conference call with Spencer and CMRPC to finalize the job posting for the position, and the conversation's been focused on drafting an IMA between the two towns. And of course, when we get a draft IMA together, we'll share that with the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board so they can go through it and make sure it's in keeping with what they think is appropriate. At this point, the discussion is, and again, we don't have any candidates right now, but we're going to keep working forward with draft IMA. At this point, the discussion's been centered around attracting someone to the position, and the town of Dudley seems to have a better benefits package than the town of Spencer, so that would be like a cost share situation, it would be included in a draft IMA. It's a, it's a better split with the health insurance, it's a better quality of health insurance, so the discussion was centered around making that more attractive to a candidate. But again, we'll draft it up and we'll have further discussions and we'll give it to the planning board to make sure they're, they're on board with the idea. We'll also talk to Sarah and Rich to make sure that we can budget a shared, a cost-sharing situation till the end of the year, we have the salary there, but if we're going to budget the health insurance, we're going to make sure we, we include that as well. I think we can do it from within the budget as it stands right now for that amount of money, but we'll have a better idea when we talk to Sarah and Rich on, on Wednesday. We've also received a request from the residents of Fish Road to provide a meeting space for their public involvement plan, which involves Fish Road LLC and the DEP. We're not sure at this point, we're in the process, the petitioners are in development of the PIP plan, but we'll facilitate a meeting space when needed as requested, as we would do for any other group. I've also included a notice from DEP in the OneDrive, I don't know if the board has seen it yet, but it's a notice from DEP that shows the responsible parties under the public involvement plan, and it just kind of goes through the tick points, the checkpoints of what needs to happen to get a, a public involvement plan with a PIP plan in place, just so that everyone's on the same page in terms of the checklist. So I'm going to ask Debbie to work with Olivia and Amanda to make sure we put that up on social media so people, if they're interested in the, in the PIP plan that the DEP put forward, they can take a look at the checklist and see what is involved in getting that plan together, getting it approved, getting to the point where you're actually having public meetings under that plan.
So I know you and I and Olivia spoke briefly on that, but is that, do you intend to be downstairs for that PIP if we give them a spot? Or are we going to put it up here and record it and replay it, or how do we do that?
Right now, all we've had is a request to use meeting space. In terms of recording it and so forth, it's, that's really up to the board if they want to move forward with recording it. If it's not a sponsored, if a board, a committee or commissioner isn't sponsoring it, that's really up to an executive decision.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, I defer those to the participants in that meeting.
All right. Somebody like to come up?
Hi, Sandy Lito.
Evening.
Part of the petitioners. The point of asking for it to be in here at town hall in this room is to have it recorded.
Okay, that throws a question, because I think the thing we had seen it was asking for a space.
I had sent an email to the, yeah, we want it recorded. It's too, it's too hard to have these kinds of meetings with the amount of information being shared and the questions and stuff, it's too hard to not, to take notes, we need to have it recorded so that we can go back and say, well, this, you know.
I agree. So that, would that be, we as selectmen, will we be coming to facilitate that?
Would you be coming to facilitate it?
Yes, like how, how would we, if we're not involved, because it's not a town project?
Well, I think that's the question, that it's selectmen, board of health, any, many member of the public can certainly come and attend the meeting. If you're going to attend in force, we would have to post it somehow if we were going to go that, that route. We'd have to pay Amanda to come here and, and record it and broadcast it as well, so...
Is that a cost we share with the applicant, maybe? Reach out to them and tell them there's a cost?
We could do that, sure.
See if they respond. My, I guess my question, I'm not saying like have a, at first I thought we'd do like a one-agenda item, but if it's going to be, with the information I think the DEP provided, I guess is what I'm going at, we're involved with Eagle Drive, where as a town, we're not involved with Fish Road, right? That's what maybe you'd kind of...
I mean, we're not involved in the regulatory side of it, as a responsible party, but we're supporting like the board, in the board of health and...
And you guys gave them the permit.
Hey, Ma?
You guys gave them the, the permit to have this kind of facility, so that's why we kind of are asking you guys to come too, so that you can hear what they have to say and hear, you know, because you guys are sort of in the middle of it too.
Right.
You know, and at some point, I mean, we hope that this never, yeah, we, we really would appreciate like the board of health, the board of selectmen, you guys gave them the permit along with the conservation commission to open this kind of a facility, and, you know, problems have occurred, there's been now two wells that have been found as of last time I checked. There have been two wells on South Bridge Street affected by, and they're, you know, putting the poet systems in there and stuff, and, you know, we kind of feel like since you guys were a part of letting them open and, and, you know, there's very little oversight with this, we kind of like you there to hear about it.
So what, what, we don't have to make that decision now, we're not in a meeting yet, but we can speak about it later.
We'll definitely facilitate a place to meet and we can certainly discuss the costs involved in having Amanda video it and so forth. But I just wanted to put it on your radar screen.
Oh, no, no, I know, we've been talking about it for a month or two now, I just want to, because in my head, I'm thinking, how is that meeting going to be moderated? I mean, board of health is here and falls under them, obviously, but if it's, if us overseeing the meeting. Terry?
That's what I'm thinking, and maybe Mr. Johnson's thinking the same thing. I'm thinking record retention requirements, I'm thinking the legality of what's being said, and by no means am I trying to say no to this. I, I just think we need to dot our i's and cross our t's and make sure we do this the right way. I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm saying we should do it the right way if we can, because I, I think it wouldn't... I've got to choose my words correctly, hard for me to do. Given the gravity of the situation and, and respondents and things of that nature, I would not want to put the town in a legal peril by doing the wrong thing. I want to make sure we do the right thing. Does that make sense, what I said?
Terry?
Mr. Chairman, the Mass DEP is very specific on the public involvement activities, and I suggest the participants in that, in that plan understand the requirements very carefully and, and follow to a letter. Follow to the letter. I think if, if we can help in some way to ensure that happens, we'd have to talk about that, but it's, it's very specific on, on what has to happen.
Right, and I, I know what you're referring to, I think if you go on the DEP's website, they actually have a chart where it spells out step by step, and I'm, I'm going to, don't hold me to the number, it was like 14?
That's what I mentioned, Mr. Chairman, that we're going to, we're going to put that up so everybody can see it in terms of what's required to get to the point of that public discourse with, with the PIP plan.
But yeah, most of the steps that Mr. Johnson was saying, I think, I'm not speaking for him, there was a lot of steps for that PIP, and the chat that DEP has on their website does not list the towns, not Dudley, just any town in general, it all says applicant and the PIP, like, so get to their LSP, like they work, you, those, the PIP and the applicant work their steps to get to where you want to get, where we all want to get. So again, we're going to put that up, that chat, but I'm definitely, I'm definitely in the court of, I want to do things right, I want to be involved as a board, as a resident, I mean, I live in town, I'm town water, but we just put on an $11 million system to mitigate, which was nobody's fault, it's just, it's there. So yes, we'll have more information, but I, I think that we're going to push for this room, record it, we'll reach out to the applicant, maybe as part of their outreach, they'll help us with the cost of having a person come in, if not, we'll have to figure something out.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else on that? Hearing none. Make a motion to accept, you all done, Jonathan?
All done.
Motion to accept the town administrator's report?
So moved.
Mr. Landry?
Second.
Mr. Siggenevich, any questions, concerns, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Assistant town administrator, Hantonson, would you like to provide?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chairman. Last Wednesday, I attended a training session held by the Massachusetts Municipal Management Association. The training was a boot camp for new town administrators and assistant town administrators. This all-day session provided an excellent opportunity for networking with other people that are new to the position, and included several sessions such as management 101 roundtables, effective communication with employees and elected officials, and an overview of collective bargaining. I found the training to be very educational and I look forward to attending more MMMA trainings in the future. I also want to take a moment to inform the board and the community of some upcoming events. First, we have the Apple Festival and also the Black Tavern Craft Festival, that's going to be held on Saturday, October 5th, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM up on Center Road, rain or shine. We also have the Fall Festival from the Dudley PTO. Come out for a family-friendly festival with food trucks, craft and specialty vendors, petting zoo, carnival games, live music, trunk or treat and more. That's going to be on October 6th, 2024, from 11:30 to 2:30 at Shepherd Hill. The Dudley Women's Club is hosting a blood drive here at the town hall parking lot on Sunday, September 29th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The water department is doing hydrant flushing from mid-September all the way through November. Flushing will be conducted 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Monday through Friday in most areas. If you have any questions, please contact the water department, 508-949-8007. And finally, Mr. Chairman, if there are any streetlight outages that residents want to report, there is a link to do it on our website now, you can just fill out a form and it'll go right to our highway department.
Any questions for the assistant town administrator? I just have one, Olivia, you've been interning, now working for us, five years?
Three years.
Three years? How did, how did the training, how do you feel that the training went with your, A, the experience you've already gained, and B, the educational component that you brought to the town with your, your degree and your masters already? How did that training dovetail with what you already have?
Great question, Mr. Chairman. So I think especially the session on collective bargaining, that's, negotiations like that is a class I took in graduate school, a human resource class, so I felt like it was a very good refresher. I've also been involved here and there with the collective bargaining on the town side of things, doing costing out collective bargaining agreements. doing costing out collective bargaining agreements, things like that. So I feel like it was kind of a bow on top of the gift that I have formed in terms of my experience here working for the town and then my education in grad school. So I did learn some new things, but it was a good refresher.
Excellent, thank you. Do we do a motion to accept yet? Motion to accept the Assistant Town Administrator?
So moved.
Mr. Landry?
Second.
Mr. Johnson? Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
One now, Mr. Chairman.
Four, zero, one, I'm sorry, Mr. Sigunovich.
Thank you.
Town Administrator evaluation. Town Administrator FY24 Performance Evaluation. So. I was gonna turn this over to our clerk, because she took on going forward. So if Jana wants to take over a little bit here, I mean, historically, we kind of go through the categories one by one. So I'll turn the floor over.
Absolutely.
To the clerk, Janet DeShane.
Just a second, pause up. Okay. So, we've been working on the performance planning for FY24. It's a little bit late, but it's done, I think. We're gonna complete it right now. So, just to, to kind of give a little bit of a, an explainer on like why I volunteered to chair this piece of it. I have a lot of experience with performance planning and evaluations in my professional life. And I kind of have a philosophy already of like how to take what's in your job description and is in your performance planning documents and kind of flesh that out. And I know everyone has a different opinion and that kind of thing, but I'm, yeah, we're just gonna jump in, I guess. So we'll start with part one, the job duties. So, I don't know, in the past, have we read through?
Yeah, I think we, we kind of do, because I don't think people at home probably have access to the categories.
No, that makes sense. So the first duty on the list is over, for the Town Administrator. Oversees and is responsible for the planning, administration, personnel management in conjunction with the collection, collector, treasurer. Procurement of services and equipment, serves as the town's chief procurement officer, public records officer, municipal hearing officer, and sexual harassment officer as provided by Massachusetts general laws. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, responsible for the coordination of the daily operation of the town and the requirements in accordance with town policies, procedures, bylaws, state and federal laws.
So, I have a quick question. Don't, haven't we historically done, we gave a number descending four, three, two, one, per category, per, per person? So would someone like to volunteer? Because the clerk is chairing this function, would somebody like to volunteer keeping track of the score? For example, if someone gave, if he, if he gets four, five below expectations, he can only have ten points for that?
I've put together a spreadsheet to track as we're.
Oh, you're gonna do it as we're doing it?
Yep.
Oh.
I, I mean, I'd like to, I don't, again, this might be a little different than in the past, but.
So we're gonna do a descending, E's a four, M is a three, B is a two, U is a one? No, no half points, no zeros, no three quarters, four, three, two.
Five.
No fives, no fives. No one hundred, yes. Alright, thank you, Jana. Should've known better.
That's okay. So I don't know if you want me to start with my score or if you want to.
We can, you can start with you. If everyone wants to go in the same order, we'll just start with Jana. Carrie can go second, we'll just work our way left to right.
Does that work? Okay.
Chairman, do we add them up at the bottom or do we go by each individual piece?
You want to go by, you're talking about like each question, give its own score?
Maybe the question.
Yeah, so the way that we've done it, well, based on the documents that I've reviewed from prior fiscal years, each individual duty gets its own score and then we total it, total it at the end and then assign like a, an overall one to four for that category. So part one will have, ultimately have a score for all of the different pieces. Because there's, I think there's seventeen different metrics for the first part.
Right.
Yeah, there are.
Okay, yeah, that'll work.
Okay, so, again, going back to just to, now that we've worked out the nuts and bolts. This is basically the planning stage. So I, I gave Mr. Ruda a four. I said, Mr. Ruda is adept at managing the many facets of his role. He makes himself available for questions during the workday and outside of stated work hours in an effort to do the job to the best of his ability.
Carrie?
Gave him a three. I don't have any comments, I only wrote comments on a couple.
I gave him a four also. I put Mr. Ruda in his role as a TA, takes an active hand in planning, administration, and personnel management when applicable. By that, I meant personnel management as in the folks that report to the board. Other duties referenced in the description are also handled professionally.
Mr. Chair, I gave a four. And the evaluation process, I believe, is very accurate, which I did last year, which is spent a pretty good amount of time every week throughout the year, interacting, observing one-on-one and through other sources with Mr. Ruda on the performance of his job and, and every aspect that affects this board as well, which is what's being evaluated here. And that's how I came to the conclusions that I have come to today.
Mr. Johnson?
I believe the Town Administrator exceeds expectations in this regard. I think there's an ongoing challenge to stay ahead of the changes in the world with a foundation that's sometimes antiquated, but the law, so I think he does, does well to work around those. Work with those, I'm sorry.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Move on, okay, perfect. So duty number twos, provides leadership and direction in the development of short and long-range plans, gathers, interprets, and prepares data for studies, reports, and recommendations, provides professional advice to the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, other town boards, committees, local officials, and department heads, makes presentations to the Board of Selectmen, Town Boards and Committees, State Agencies, Town Meeting, and the general public. So I gave Mr. Ruda a four in this category as well. Mr. Ruda stays on top of regulatory changes to make sure that any advice being provided to various Town Hall departments and stakeholders is sound and decisions are made with future-proofing in mind. As a specific example, Mr. Ruda has not been deterred by changes in this, in the application process, process for the energy aggregation project. And that's just one example of, of that, but there, I feel like there are many others that we could kind of cite. Mr. Sigunovich?
Meets three. Thank you.
I also gave him a four, exceeds. I said, Mr. Ruda's planning of the goals and objectives clearly have been done with the town's best interest as an ultimate end result. He's available to aid any commissioner board, not, not just under his jurisdiction. By that, I mean, we've heard Water Sewer come up several times in the course of the year, thanking Mr. Ruda for helping them, whether it was aiding the contact with Town Council, aiding, I think, with applications. So I think he definitely, as I said, end result of his work is the best interest of the town. Mr. Landry?
I gave him a four.
Mr. Johnson?
Also a four. I think, if you think about the, the planning that goes into bringing to fruition some of the, the grant opportunities. Now, a lot of the leaders in this Town Hall are, are working for getting some state money back on, and pumped into the town. And that coordination between John and obviously several others, I think that it's very difficult and exceeds expectations.
Moving on to duty number three. Attends all meetings of the Board of Selectmen, receives and makes appropriate disposition or referral of all selectman correspondences and communications, anticipates the needs of the Board of Selectmen for information and background material, ensures that all decisions of the Board of Selectmen are carried out, keeps the Board of Selectmen fully advised regarding departmental operations and the financial statuses, status of the town. Gave a four in this category. Personally, any information I've requested from Mr. Ruda has always been attended to and has been issued quickly. He doesn't hesitate to provide updates ad hoc and shares all relevant communications with the board. If there is one thing to say about Jonathan, it's that he is meticulous about uploading information to the board and sharing it with us as it comes in, so that we're always able to be apprised of like what's changing. At least, again, that's been my experience.
Three meets, thank you.
I also gave him a four. Mr. Ruda rarely misses a meeting, he keeps the board up to date, ensures our policy and operational goals are met. I'd like to echo what was said before. Even when I wasn't chairman, I speak to Jonathan at least every couple days. As Jana said, better than I can, he, he keeps everything up to date, he's quick to share information, he goes out of his way to be available. We've talked on the weekend, we talk after hours, we talk before hours. And just drive by, you see his car here all the time, even when he's, the Town Hall's closed.
A four.
Mr. Johnson?
Exceeds four. The Select Board has rarely cut off guard with an issue in our preview.
Duty number four, oversees the permit and licensing procedures of the Board of Selectmen. I gave a four. All permit and licensing procedural questions are answered fully and accurately for both people that are applying for those permits and then our questions on the backend.
Carrie?
Four exceeds.
I also gave him a four. I said permitting and licenses are always done without fail, as Mr. Johnson said on the previous one. I don't, can't recall the last time there was an issue with a license or permit because of an error on our end. Mr. Landry?
Four.
Mr. Johnson?
I agree with four.
Alright, duty number five, establishes goals, objectives, recommends the adoption of, and oversees the implementation of town policies based on the needs of the town, provides supervision, direction, and guidance, including regular communication and development of goals and objectives for all town staff and reporting department heads. Assists all departments of the town in any administrative or operational areas to ensure regulatory, statutory, or procedural, procedural compliance. I gave a four. Mr. Ruda is extremely mindful of what will benefit the town's employees and what changes will result in a better experience for residents. Most recently, he's begun working on updates to the town's social media policy to better align with the changing legal requirements.
I also gave him a four. Mr. Ruda recommends and implements and oversees all applicable town policies. Mr. Ruda assists all departments and town boards without fail when they come to him with a problem.
Three meets, thank you.
Yep.
I'm sorry, Carrie. No worries, I was just seeing if you.
No, we can randomize it, it's fine.
Something on you. Mr. Landry?
Four.
Mr. Johnson?
Meets three.
Okay. Six, establishes and oversees operating and capital budget process from developing instructions and settling, setting deadlines to providing materials and recommendations for appropriations and capital planning reviews. Coordinates the development of strategic financial goals for the town, makes recommendations concerning financial policies and practices, reviews all revenue collected, and makes recommendations concerning fees, charges, and enterprise fund rates as well as new sources, sources of revenue. I gave a three.
Three.
Me?
Yep.
I said, Mr. Ruda oversees the budget process. The Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen can only work with numbers provided at a timely manner to the Town Administrator's office. Treasurer, Collector, and the Board of Assessors provide numbers verified by the Town Accountant to ensure accuracy. And then it comes to Mr. Ruda with the team to put the budget together.
Would you say that succeeds?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, perfect, thanks.
That's my name.
Mr. Landry?
Four.
I'll also say four. The Town Administrator does an excellent job in preparing the town to meet its obligations in the current year, even with the headwinds of the past and need to prepare for the future.
Thank you. Duty number seven, participates on behalf of the Board of Selectmen in all collective bargaining, hiring of town employees, implementation of the classification and compensation plans, and negotiation of employment contracts with Labor Council. Develops and recommends bargaining concepts and strategies for Board of Selectmen's approval. Attends all bargaining sessions and/or grievance hearings. Advises officials on the impact of contract terms on personnel systems, classification of positions, and wage administration. Works with Town Council to shape and implement responses to all legal issues impacting the town. I gave him a four. Mr. Ruda has a strong relationship with legal counsel. In addition, he's been working to bring contract terms, professional classifications, and wages up to current market rates and standards. Mr. Sigunovich?
Three meets.
I gave him a four. I said, Mr. Ruda handles this category in accordance with the Town Administrator, Town Administrator bylaw in a successful manner. Just as an aside, I've been doing it long enough where back in the day, it used to be two selectmen would meet with the administrator and then meet with the union reps to try to hammer out an agreement. And ever since we've gone to the Administrator bylaw that allows him to negotiate on our behalf with the department head, it's been a much, much more successful and streamlined process.
Four.
Carrie?
I'll also say four. I, I agree with the Chair. The, the bargaining sessions in particular are, are done fairly. Good communication between all parties and handled very well by the Town Administrator.
Duty number eight, consults with department heads, board and committee members, and employees of every rank in the town's employment on sensitive issues involving performance problems, health issues, management styles, contract interpretation, leave and attendance, and job assignments. I gave a three. Mr. Sigunovich?
Three.
I gave a four. Mr. Ruda has periodic, regular staff meetings to ensure a safe, healthy, and productive environment. And I base that on speaking to members of the staff that tell me that they find those regularly scheduled meetings very helpful and beneficial. Mr. Landry?
Four.
Three.
Duty number nine, serves as the Board's, Board of Selectmen's liaison and public information officer to town boards or committees, local, statewide, intermunicipal, regional, and federal agencies. Negotiates with citizens and other outside public and private agencies, assists citizens in their interaction with all town departments, Board of Selectmen, and committees in the delivery of town services and FEMA emergency, emergency management requirements. Response to oral and written inquiries, requests for assistance, and complaints. Referes citizens to appropriate departments and staff members, investigates complaints from a variety of sources, develops responses, and when appropriate directs corrective action. I gave a four. I've been particularly impressed with Mr. Ruda's response time and understanding of when to pull certain departments into conversations, especially where citizen complaints are concerned. Mr. Sigunovich?
I, I gave a three on this, and I'm gonna comment on this one if I may. Parts of this were exceeds, in my opinion. The, the parts that weren't involved the citizens. And, and I'm looking at these petition articles and everything that we have from the Collins Center studies, legal advice, what have you, is that it's the prudent thing to do not to have a personnel board and not to, and to have a strong TA. But residents are assist, insisting on exactly the opposite. And the only thing I can think of is either it's something, well, well, it's one of two things. It's either something they don't want or it's something they're not informed about. And I, I, I have to think they're just not informed about it and I don't know. I, I don't even know if it's inappropriate to ding Mr. Ruda on this, but I'm going to stick, I'm gonna stick with three meets.
I gave him a four in this category, and I, just as a general coverall, I said, Mr. Ruda handles all of this as part of his official duties.
Mr. Landry?
Four.
I also say he exceeds in this scenario. You know, some of the toughest parts are the unknown, and when questions arise about a scenario we're unfamiliar with, the town administrator does a great job in pointing them in the right direction.
Duty number 10 prepares and writes town meeting warrants and motions, develops rights and compiles background materials for town meetings, works directly with town council and bond council for review of warrant articles, provides motions for FAA and Board of Selectmen, and oversees review of departmental-sponsored articles. I gave a three. Mr. Sigunovich?
I gave an exceeds on this. I think one of Mr. Ruda's strengths is the written word. If you've ever written, if you've ever read something that he's written, it's like an attorney's brief. It's, he communicates extremely well through writing. If there was a five, I'd give a five on this one, but exceeds.
I also gave him exceed. I put Mr. Ruda ensures the town meeting warrants produced and vetted accurately. By that, I mean, I took this to, when he passes out the, like tonight was the draft, before we go to the final, it's always made mention as a draft. By the time we get to town meeting, I can't remember any time that a town meeting warrant article was rejected or ruled out of order due to an error on Mr. Ruda's behalf or the town's behalf. Mr. Landry?
Four.
I agree with a four.
Duty number 11 oversees all town automated management information systems, makes recommendations for improvements, and implements appropriate policies relative to systems. I gave a three, but I wanted to at least qualify that, like, it's a three based on last fiscal year, which again ended June 30th. So, I know we've kind of actually talked a lot about our information system today and updates that are happening, so I just wanted to clarify that. Mr. Sigunovich?
What number are we on? 11?
Number 11, yeah.
Oh, exceeds.
I also gave an exceed. My comment was he handles the responsibility and constantly is looking for improvement. And by that, I mean, cybersecurity in my mind kind of fell underneath this. He went out and he seeked out a cybersecurity grant. And honestly, I, if I have a question on something that I think needs improvement or has fallen through the cracks, he answers it. Like, today he talked about Amanda Gage doing our, the role that Depp Timpador used to have, and now he's gotten Amanda to do it. So, I mean, he's looking at a creative way to solve a problem. So, I gave an exceed.
Mr. Landry?
Four.
I also say four. I think some of the hardest things to keep up with are, as technology changes, how do you go back and ensure the policies change with them? Because often they've become irrelevant. So, I think we saw that one early today. Once again, we have to update the way we spell out our work because the technology changed a lot.
Duty number 12 oversees the coordination and compilation of annual town reports, annual licenses, and appointments to boards, committees, and employment with the town. I gave a three. Mr. Sigunovich?
Four exceeds.
I also gave him a four. This is kind of a, it's not a big paragraph, but kind of broad. I know the town report is a compilation that all departments participate in. Used to go through Michelle at Jarvis, Jonathan delegated that to her, and I believe she did it right along. But I also said he handles these responsibilities professionally. Again, we talked tonight about licenses. I think it was Carrie. Jay, somebody said that, I can't remember very really that a license isn't in order. Proof is in the pudding. Mr. Landry?
Four.
I agree, four.
Duty number 13 serves as town constable, serves as notary public, and commissioner to qualify public officers. I gave a three. Mr. Sigunovich?
I gave a three here as well.
I gave a four. I didn't make a comment. I'm going to make a quick one now. I mean, I, he serves as a constable, notary, and he's a commissioner. I mean, it's self-explanatory that he meets those requirements.
Four.
Jay?
Three.
Duty number 14 conducts independent research and prepares and submits reports to the Board of Selectmen as well as state or federal agencies as required. I gave a four. As has been stated, Mr. Ruda has a special talent for staying informed on new information that impacts our operations as a town. He does not hesitate to share it with effective parties to ensure compliance. Mr. Sigunovich?
Meets three.
I gave him a four on this one also. He shows that compliance is necessary, and, you know, some of the things that maybe doesn't exactly fall into this, but like the bridge. I mean, we were notified it was shut down by the state. We took it down. He's spent an inordinate amount of time since the small bridge replacement program the state had. I mean, there was things that he tried. Now we have Congressman Neal's office involved, and I know other people are taking credit, but I think Mr. Ruda played a part in working with the feds on something similar like the bridge. Mr. Landry?
Four.
Jay?
I would say four as well. If he's not doing the independent research, he's encouraging the subject matter expert to do the research and help them with that.
Duty number 15 acts as the liaison and represents the Board of Selectmen before town, state, federal, and regional authorities. I went with a four on this one. Mr. Sigunovich?
I went with a four as well, and there are many instances, but I'll point to one. The conversations he's had with DEP and keeping us informed on that. I think he's represented our interests well as far as getting information to residents and what have you, so.
Four.
I also gave him a four, and I said he ensures our compliance is necessary, and Carrie beat me to it, but DEP is the hot button in town, and I think last week's meeting, or two weeks ago's meeting proved that he's on top of it. Mr. Landry?
Four.
Jay?
A four as well.
Duty number 16 may be required to attend training programs or seminars in order to stay abreast of changes in municipal laws, regulations, or policies that pertain to the management of local government in Massachusetts. I gave a three. Mr. Sigunovich?
Three meets.
I also gave a three, and it's in my summation at the end, and I can touch on it briefly. But one of the things I, there's no reflection on what he does. But I said he should try to do, is be more, attend more training and a couple other things I have. Same thing, I just think he does it, but if there's training programs, we should either be more allowing or he should be more forthcoming saying, I want to go.
Four.
Jay?
Mr. Johnson?
I agree with the chair. I'm concerned that, said with three, but I'm concerned that it's because, you know, after 23 hours a day, there's not quite enough room for some training in that 24th hour instead of, you know, sleeping family.
Great.
Last but not least is the town's chief public information officer. I gave a three.
I gave a three as well.
I gave an exceed because I didn't put any comments, but all you got to do is read the local website times, and Dudley's usually on the front page for something. Jonathan is out front with the information. He's out front answering questions. He's out front taking the hit or the tougher questions on behalf of the town. I mean, I would say a couple of weeks ago, and there was some guy screaming at the window. The other day, there was a gentleman in the elevator showing Mr. Ruda and I his coffee cup from Dunkin' Donuts. He wanted us to go up and shut Dunkin' Donuts down because he didn't like the way the inside of his coffee cup looked. It wasn't a public information request, but Jonathan handled it as the face of the town for us, and Dunkin' was not shut down. Mr. Landry?
Four.
Mr. Johnson?
A four as well.
So, from here, we're going to move on to part two, which is objectives. So, these are some of the goals that were defined, or these are the goals that were defined last year in accordance with SMART guidelines. So, the first piece is fiscal management with the goal of successfully establishing, developing, and managing the town's budgeting process. The following performance objectives have been established. Town administrator has balanced annual and supplemental budget recommendations substantially complete at the time of budget meetings. The town administrator is able to explain recommendations and acceptively answer questions asked by the Board of Selectmen, FAA, and other stakeholders, including town meeting at the time of recommendation. The town administrator's budget recommendations accurately reflect the public policy and spending priorities of the Board of Selectmen as represented through board votes, actions, and voted policies. Department heads are made aware of those priorities, and strategic financial goals of the town are part of the budgeting process. A specific timeline is developed by the town administrator for budget preparation and distributed to appropriate department heads, boards, commissions, and committees. Deadlines are set to provide materials and recommendations for FAA and CIC reviews. And the town administrator can demonstrate his ability to adapt to unforeseen changes in his budget recommendations throughout the course of the fiscal year. So, I gave a four on completing this objective. The budget process for this year was relatively smooth with very collaborative budgeting sessions scheduled early and with ample time for discussion, and that started back in January, February. Having all of that time, I know it seems early to start budget as early as we did in this last fiscal year, but I think it was, it was really important, especially following the town votes last year. Mr. Sigunovich?
Meets three.
I gave Mr. Ruda exceed. I said he's done an exemplary job preparing the budget. Mr. Ruda can only produce the numbers when provided accurate numbers in a timely manner by our town financial departments, which we touched on, I touched on before. If we don't have accurate numbers, it's hard for Mr. Ruda's responsibility. And the example I used was the most recent Norfolk agricultural school student. I mean, we got notice in the last month, roughly, that we all of a sudden have a, I know we talked about 28,000 tonight, but it's more like 56,000 when you factor in tuition. Not a exorbitant sum by any stretch, but the way our budget is tight, 56,000 is the equivalent of a entry-level firefighter, police officer, probably a highway guy and a half. So, you got to adapt to that number. And again, I think he's done a great job. Mr. Landry?
Four weighing the information gained with most objectives established in the performance plan. It was found that Mr. Ruda performed above the set requirements.
Mr. Johnson?
I apologize if some of this gets repetitive between the, we saw it before. But I said four, I said John does well to prepare the budget each year with the town leadership. Congratulations to MJ for making it to the end, towards the end of the meeting. By ensuring he balances known facts and past history against the new challenges the world we now live in.
All right. Goal number two, human resource management and leadership. With the goal of recruiting, maintaining, coaching, and leading town staff, the following performance objectives have been developed. The town administrator models sound personnel procedures and practices in oversight of the human resources function. Leads, directs, and develops reporting town hall staff. Develops good staff morale and loyalty to the town. Recruits and assigns the best available personnel in terms of their competencies. Leads negotiations of labor contracts representing town interests and board guidelines. Coaches and expects that an attitude and feeling of helpfulness, courtesy, and sensitivity to public perception exists in employees meeting the public. Represents the town to media as chief public relations spokesperson on town government issues, and maintains awareness of developments and plans in other jurisdictions. And I gave a four, saying Mr. Ruda has hired some fantastic staff in the last year and works very hard to support the staff of the town, whether they report to him directly or not. Mr. Sigunovich?
Three meets.
I also gave him a four on this one. Mr. Sains just said he handles this with professionalism. As addition to staff, including the new town accountant and assistant TA, were both integral hires. Also, we had the layoffs after, before the override passed, and the departments that were affected. Mr. Ruda working with department heads was able to bring back most of the people, the ones that we didn't work with them to retain, people that they're comfortable with in their departments. Mr. Landry?
Four.
Mr. Johnson?
Said meets three. I said John has clear vision of how to manage the talented personnel at town hall. He can look to coaching the key leaders here in a way that generates a strategic look out to future goals. This is challenging in today's world, but he can bring forth a strong work ethic. It is a great example for others.
Okay. So, goal number three, communication with the Board of Selectmen. With the goal of keeping the Board of Selectmen current with information, opinions, and facts seated for them, the Board, to make informed policy decisions, the town administrator's objectives are: Keeping the Board of Selectmen appropriately and fully informed by responding to and initiating improved communication efforts. Recognizing that any issue or change that directly or significantly impacts the community falls within the Board of Selectmen's authority to provide feedback. Allowing the Board of Selectmen the opportunity to provide feedback on policy initiatives and changes before implementation. Involving the Board of Selectmen in the determination of collective bargaining strategies for the current contract process. And keeping Selectmen updated on its progress. Ensuring that all Selectmen are aware of anything significant before it appears in the newspaper or is published through official town media channels. This shouldn't be surprising considering how I felt about his communication in part one, but I gave him a four. You know, as cited in the job duties, he never hesitates to reach out to us and let us know, like, what we need to know. And he's very discerning of that information and of our time. Mr. Sigunovich?
Three meets.
I gave him a four with a simple comment of, there's no wishes at all with this category for me. Mr. Landry?
Four.
I also said four. Number one, John is available and communicates well with the Select Board. And number two, we are rarely surprised by current issues facing the town.
Goal number four, revenues derived from other sources. With the goal of establishing other sources of funding outside of local taxation, the following performance objectives have been established. Town administrator is able to demonstrate by regular and public reporting that he is taking an active and leading role in securing grants, earmarks, and other sources of funding, payments, or agreements that are not derived from the local tax base. And is able to, or has demonstrated over the course of FY '24, that any success in securing funding described above supports the Board of Selectmen's public goals that include but are not limited to: Public health, safety and security, compliance and regulatory requirements, quality of life, and employee training, technology upgrades, and enhanced and improved citizen services. I gave him a four in this category. In the last year, Mr. Ruda has seen the fruits of grant writing come to fruition, with the town halls, electric vehicle charging station coming online in June, and the municipal local cybersecurity grant applications submitted during the fiscal year partially approved. Mr. Sigunovich?
I gave him a four here. There are, there are streams of revenue that we just, we could have lost, whether it was the solar panels on the dump, whether it was, I mean, it's not revenue, but the bridge on Hill Street that's going to happen at some point. The numerous things going on around town, the studies. We entertain the thought for the intersection by Airport Road and Dudley Hill. Just a lot of, and I know that's not particularly a revenue you'd think to be a revenue, but I think it is when we get something done for the town to make the town better, and it doesn't cost us anything. To me, that's a revenue. So, a strong four here. Thank you.
I also gave him a four. Mr. Ruda, since he's been our administrator, I know we do annual goals, has brought in, or is in the process of about $7 million in MassWorks, FEMA grants, and other sources. We have a grant spreadsheet that's available. You can see what's been awarded and what's outstanding.
Four.
I'll say four. You know, something I didn't think of is how creative he is with new revenue opportunities. the new revenue opportunities. And, uh, I think what I wanted to say was, cost avoidance is almost as good as revenue. John knows the key areas to ensure the revenues derived by the town are understood, which isn't always easy, uh, and, cause it's also keenly driven by interdepartmental cooperation, if I can spit that out.
Okay. Part three, competencies.
Yeah, with it.
So close. Uh, leadership assumes responsibility for directing and coordinating activities of others, gains respect and confidence. Stimulates the best efforts of others in the accomplishment of goals, selects and signs tasks in accordance with the development needs of direct reports, creates a motivating work climate, fosters teamwork. Um, I gave a three in this category. Mr. Sigunovich?
Three.
I gave him an exceed, and, um, part of it was, I said, look at the grants awarded, and it goes back to Jonathan working with other departments. I also said, um, my handwriting's awful, accomplishes the goals and, and creates a productive work environment. Again, by talking with staff and people in the town hall and outside, um, no one has come to me and said Jonathan does not promote a motivating work environment. Mr. Landry?
Four.
Mr. Johnson?
I said three. The town administrator leads through his role and should continue to look at ways to improve interdepartmental cooperation.
Um, two, control and follow-up. Monitors the accomplishment of goals and objectives, uses performance standards to provide evaluation and feedback. I gave a four. Mr. Sigunovich?
Three meets.
Um, I'm just gonna make a blanket comment from here on down. I put, I gave him, um, a four, and again, he handles it all in accordance with the town administrator bylaw and his relevant experience. I think Jonathan's ability to reach out to not just our most recent elected state rep, but his experience by working at the state just benefits the town when it comes to all this, all these things. So I gave him a four.
Mr. Landry?
Four.
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, four as well. You know, e- every once in a while, we get a, uh, a list of, of what's been accomplished over the last X amount of time, and it's, it's, uh, it's a fairly long and, uh, list of great work, so that, that fa- you don't do that without follow-up.
Three, organizing and planning. Demonstrates ability to plan, to establish priorities and set goals, and to structure assignments. I gave a four. Um, Mr. Sigunovich has stepped out, but he gave a three. Mr. Sullivan?
I gave a four.
Okay.
Four.
I gave a four as well.
Okay. Um, judgment, uses logic and sound reasoning to generate, evaluate, and choose courses of action. This refers to quality of decisions rather than quantity or timel- timeliness. Um, I gave a four. Uh, Mr. Sigunovich gave a three. Mr. Sullivan?
I gave a four.
Four.
I gave a four as well.
Decisiveness, makes timely decisions and takes action. I gave a four. Uh, Mr. Sigunovich gave a three.
Four.
Mr. Landry?
Four.
Uh, four. The town administrator isn't, uh, the, the suggester, right? We, we ask for his opinion on a lot of things when we have to decide something, but he has to, he has to make decisions every day that, uh, help move the town forward.
Number six, cooperation. Works harmoniously with others to complete assignments, responds positively to requests, instructions, and policies and procedures. I gave a three in this category. Um, Mr. Sigunovich also gave a three. Mr. Sullivan?
Again, I gave a four, and I don't repeat myself. Based on conversations with staff and other people, I have no, I have no feedback that suggests otherwise.
Four.
I said three. Said, uh, the town administrator handles the interdepartmental and outside assignments well.
Okay, number seven, interpersonal. Shows sensitivity to and recognition of the needs and feelings of others, develops rapport and trust, deals effectively with others at all levels. Um, I gave a three. Mr. Sigunovich?
Three.
Four.
Four.
Three, the town administrator works effectively with key members of town hall and town department leaders.
Number eight, reliability. Assumes responsibility for and can be depended upon to complete assignments. I gave a four. Mr. Sigunovich?
Four.
I gave a four. Never asked Jonathan a question or asked her information and not received it, and it wasn't done properly.
Four.
Uh, four, town administrator is always working towards completing assignments in a timely manner.
Number nine, flexibility. Alter's plans and behavior in response to changes in the situation. I gave a four. Mr. Sigunovich?
Three meets.
Mr. Sullivan?
I gave a four, and I'm just gonna state with these next four coming up, I have no issues or concerns with any of them.
Mr. Landry?
Four.
Mr. Johnson?
This is where I want that five, because flexibility, uh, with the, the challenges these past few years, uh, being unforeseen and, uh, seemingly overwhelming, town administrator has done a great job moving in the right direction when these headwinds happen.
Number ten, written communication. Writes clearly and concisely, influences or persuades others through written presentation. I gave a four. Um, and I would give additional comments, but I think Mr. Sigunovich has already said it. Mr. Sigunovich?
I won't say it again. Four.
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 Mr. Johnson?
Uh, four. I said town administrator is clear and concise, both in person, written, email, or phone.
Oral communication. Speaks clearly and effectively, influences or persuades others at all levels. I gave a three. Mr. Sigunovich?
Three.
And a four.
Okay. Mr. Landry?
Four.
And Mr. Johnson?
As I already said, four.
Last but not least, uh, budget and cost control. Prepares and adminis- and ministers operating and capital budgets. I gave a three. Mr. Sigunovich? Number twelve.
Meets three.
I know I said I wouldn't say, I gave him a four because I can't ima- I can't recall where our administrator, he's prepared a budget, and we've come up short, unless it was something outside of our control. Budget is always spot on.
Mr. Landry?
Four.
And Mr. Johnson?
I said, uh, four. I said town administrator does well with the current inputs to maximize compliance and benefits for the town.
Part four, comments regarding employees' performance during the year. Um, please identify additional responsibilities and objectives undertaken during the performance period, difficulties in achieving results, and/or extraordinary achievements. I only personally got to see all of these different metrics for about three weeks before the end of the fiscal year. Um, but expanding beyond that to conversations that, um, I've had with Mr. Ruda, like, as part of the finance committee, um, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm really impressed. I don't think that a meets or a three is a bad thing. I think it's, it's right on target for where we, we need you to be, and I think that overall, like, you push so hard to do the best work you can and to, you know, take in anything that will benefit the town. And I just really appreciate that. Mr. Sigunovich?
Uh, and I'm glad you said, uh, a meets a three isn't a bad thing. That's not a bad thing. That, that's not even a bad, that's above a C in my opinion. I, I, I struggled with this piece, and I didn't put anything, because I didn't, I, I didn't really see anything additional. I didn't see, I didn't see difficulty, because he, he just does. You don't see the difficulty. It's not like someone running a marathon at Heartbreak Hill in there. You, you don't see the difficulty. And extraordinary achievements, I, I mean, no offense, I, I can't recall anything, but again, that's not a bad thing. That's not a bad thing. I don't, I also don't recall any difficulties, anything that was horrible. I just, you know, meets isn't a bad thing. I'm happy with meets.
Oh, I agree with the comments. I just, and by giving someone an exceed doesn't mean I don't see avenue for improvement and or, um, a gain. I think, and we overlapped, as Jan was saying, uh, last year, while doing some of this, you know, we, again, we go back to the override process. I think Mr. Ruda stared the town through the budget override process while we still ma- maintained an effective work environment in the town hall. As we talked earlier, and we talk at every meeting now, grants, uh, applications, and awards are continuing. I mean, I served on this board, and I had previous town administrators tell us we don't qualify for XYZ grant. Some of the ones Mr. Ruda has gotten us, we were told we, we didn't qualify for. So I also said, you know, a part of my comments about his performance, he's prepared, available, and approachable for any and all issues as they arise. Again, as I stated, I talked to the office quite a bit. Um, I think everybody's kinda echoed in their own way that they get results when they ask for them. If you don't get them at that moment, you'll get an email or a phone call, or he passes it off to the appropriate person. I think he's, I think he's done an exemplary job. Doesn't mean I have to find a high or a low, a middle. I just, I don't know where, he can always improve. Anybody can improve, but I just don't know where we've fallen short as an operation, and he spearheads it. He's not a strong administrator. We talk about it. I could probably name five elected positions or boards that don't report to him directly, but he's, they, when there's a problem, where do they go? You know, for example, if there's an issue in a department that the board is elected, they have an issue, where do they go? To Mr. Ruda. So, again, as I said, he's prepared, available, and approachable for any and all issues. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like I said, it, it is something that I see weekly throughout the entire year. So, wh- when others say they're not aware of certain things, it doesn't surprise me, uh, because you're gonna have to spend a lot of time here and communicating with the town administrator's office and the department heads, which I do, to know the things that most people aren't gonna know. So with all the unforeseen issues and downturns throughout the year, the goals and expectations set at the beginning of the fiscal year for Mr. Ruda, he has found a way when others could not in bypassing initial goals, even when none were set. And a lot of that isn't seen, and that's a shame, and I just wanna bring that to light. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
When you talk about additional responsibilities or objectives, uh, as the, the leader of our human resources here in town hall, I start thinking about the, uh, process we're going through right here. And I'd love, in the future, to hear about any potential, uh, improvements to these processes. I, I don't wanna say, I, I feel like some of these processes are a little archaic for, uh, for a professional. I think, uh, bringing the accomplishments and meeting the objectives and presenting that as a professional is a different way to do it, and that's how I prefer to see things like this. Some of our comments, especially mine, I guess, are probably anecdotal, and I, I don't know if they really serve the purpose that, of developing people and rewarding them for things they've done and asking them to, to work on some things that they need to work on. So, and the additional duty would be, maybe take a look at this and see, what, what do we need in town hall to, to help us have a better tool to develop people? And when you talk about extraordinary achievements, uh, it, it takes, it takes, uh, what, it takes humility to have this position, and, because you're, you're, you're handling the slings and arrows of a, a certain part of the population, and I, I, I think you do it with, uh, with humility, and, uh, you remember, it's for the, the, cause in those, in those slings and arrows, sometimes there's something that we need to work on. So I, I, I appreciate that. And, you know, the, the self-deprecating humor that you, um, survive by is, is, um, another sign of the humility, and, and we really need as a board to, to support the town administrator better and, and take as much weight as we can on some of the topics that, um, we've, we've talked about here today.
Okay, so moving on to the overall performance rating. Based on the numbers of like fours and threes and all that, um, oop, sorry, go ahead.
Are we, uh, you can ex- are we gonna explain the, uh, the averaging, or do you wanna?
Yeah, no, I can do that. I mean, unless-
We can talk about next year, maybe we do like P ninety or, uh, do some-
P ninety?
The ninety percentiles, you know, you can run from the highs and lows.
Yeah, there's, there's so many different ways to do it. So I did, um, the math that I did was basically just a straightforward, like, sum every line, add all of that up, and divide it by the number of categories. I would, in, in my mind, anything above a three and a half added, added together is, and exceeds expectations. It's, we would round it up to four if it was.
I'm just thinking.
Okay, yeah, if we would round it up to four, and that would make it an exceeds. As far as the subtotals go for each part. So, just to go over, like, the, the subtotal for part one was like, was a three-seven. The subtotal for part two was a three-eight, and the subtotal for part three was a three-seven. The total performance rating, with all of that added together, and then again, split out by the number of parts that were rated, would be a three-point-seven. And I would consider that an exceeds expectations. I don't know if anyone else has a different feeling on that.
Uh, I, I agree. I think, you know, it's, you know, we have, have some weighted sections, but they're all relatively evenly weighted. So I think that, uh, that using an average is the best way to, to do it in that sense, because each section is relatively the same. So, I'm, I'm good with that, and, and you have to have some ki- you, it has to be a four or a three. It's a lot closer to four in every s- situation here than a three, so I would agree that that would be rounded to a four.
The, if I may, the way I've seen it done as well is, like, unsatisfactory is a one. Anything up to one would be unsatisfactory. Soon as you break over that one, you're below expectations up till two. And then, uh, and so on. So basically, like, a three-point-oh-one would be, exceeds expectations. However, however you all wanna do it, I, we just need to have a set piece.
I think, I think historically, we've done the, the average, and if it comes in like it did, three-seven, it's considered next step up. If it was a two-seven, it would be a three. A one-seven would be a two. Now, if it was a one, as Janet stated, if it was a one-four, we'd probably look more down. But I just wanted to add some, I, some other quick comments I wanted to add, and it's a lot of it's self-reflection, and it's no, no reflection on the people I serve, because I, I truly enjoy, I think we have a really good board, and I think the town is well-served, but, and I've talked to Jonathan about this, it was no surprise. I said one thing I think Mr. Ruda should try to do is to be more visible at public events. Again, I know it's, as Mr. Johnson stated, when you're here, sometimes it's hard to get back out. And I said by extension, so should the Board of Selectmen. I, I, I think we all have a, a niche, and I'm gonna use Mr. Johnson, for example. His son was involved in Scouts, and to this day, I believe Mr. Johnson still is pretty active with the Scouts.
Slacking the last couple-
Slacking last comments, but yes, I-
Generally speaking, Mr. Landry's a veteran, he's with the veterans a lot. You know, for years, I was the, the rep to the schools. I'd go to, I bet Janet was probably there. I'd go to the schools as the dare, the dare's graduation speaker. I went to eighth grade graduation. This is, I think, like, a little bit of selfie value, we need to get our messages out there. I said he's not only the TA, but he's a long-term, multi-general family man in town. It's a reflection on how he cares about this town. And honestly, I think, I'll use myself as an example. You become, you can become inadvertently polarized. I'm sure there's people that look at, I'll use myself, they'll say, oh, he's been doing it 20 years, what's he done? You know? Get to a point where you're still the same person you were five years ago. People tell you you're doing a great job, and now all of a sudden, power of social media, I, you know, I got my head in places it doesn't belong, and one guy told me I sounded brain dead, and I wanted to tell him I had a heart attack, and maybe I missed some oxygen for a while, but I didn't wanna overestimate. And then at the end, I also said, Mr. Ruda and the BOs should continue to remain visible, approachable, and informed of the public concerns. Again, people that are active on social media probably see things, are they concerned? Is it hysteria, is it false information? It could be a little bit of it all. I said it a million times, just come, come to a meeting, trust that we're doing the job. If you don't, you run. You run, you get in, you leave, vote getter, and people like that. Obviously, you resonate, and you're doing a great job. But that's my, my feeling and comments moving forward, but I agree with Janet, a 3.7 should be, should bump up. Except if it was a 2.7 going to a 3. Sorry, I think enough of the beaten path. Figured I wrote it down so I could say it.
So, okay, so then, overall, when we go to sign this, we'll check off that exceeds expectations box.
We can write the score in two if you want, just for us.
Yeah.
Or you, if you could print a page.
Yeah. I could definitely do that. Do we need to sign this now? Because I don't have a hard copy.
No, we can sign it there, isn't it? Well, I mean, make, make a motion, we accept the performance review with a tabulated score of 3.7 to be deemed meet, exceeds expectations.
So moved. Second.
Moving, Mr. Johnson?
We're gonna vote, Mr. Chairman, a discussion on the motion, before you put an amen to it.
I was gonna ask the-
The hardest, the hardest part of all of this is to sit here and listen to positive vibes, you know, category after category, rating after rating. Next to Olivia, in front of Debbie, across from Amanda, MJ sitting over there. All of them absolutely deserve credit for any rating that I ever gotten. I'm not just saying that the sound magnetism, I actually mean it. You know, we talk about grants. You pull, you pull MJ off the road in the middle of a project to come in and sit on a Zoom call, talk about a change of pace. But he doesn't. He does it without grumbling. We mentioned tonight, we can, we can now report potholes and streetlights out, spontaneous from Amanda, and it made me look good, and I'm sure it was remembered when I, when I was rated for it. But that was all Amanda and Olivia. Need I say more? And the communications effort that we've improved upon, and I was rated on, former TNG reported Devlin Plaka, who works for, for us, is responsible for a lot of that. So I do provide a lot of oversight, but I don't want it to ever be lost that, in this case, it is absolutely critical to recommend, you know, to recognize the contribution of others. And, you know, Mr. Sigenovich said meets expectations is just that, meaning expectations, which is good, because I say the exact same thing and take on the same approach to evaluations as Mr. Sigenovich does. I say, give, I give them the same, the same wording. You've met the expectations of the job. There's gotta be some room to improve. People look at it differently, subjectively, and that's great, and I certainly appreciate it. But I don't take that the wrong way. I certainly take it for, for what it's meant to be, and I just don't wanna miss the opportunity to recognize people. And finally, I, I absolutely agree with the, what I think is probably the consensus. I do need to get out in the public more. It's been a lot easier to get out, it was a lot easier to get out when I was a selectman than it is in this position. You do tend to get into bunker mentality when you try to pass three overrides, and you try to, and you're talking about laying people off as a result of it, and people don't understand, or take the time to understand, or I don't communicate effectively enough why we're, why we're noticing people for layoffs, or why we potentially would have to close the library. It's, you do tend to get, you know, when, when the rocks are falling on your head, you do tend to get into the bunker and not wanna leave. So it's not an excuse, it's an explanation, and I take that with a grain of salt, and for what it's worth, I'm going to make more of an effort to get out into the public. People may not be excited and run up and give me a big old hug. You know, I don't anticipate that'll happen, but maybe, you know, maybe some of them will. So.
You know, I appreciate Jonathan's comments, and that, that's reflected on how he's been since he's taken this role over. Again, I'm just going on, I haven't talked to everybody, nobody talks to everybody. I've talked to a lot. I would hope I would get honest feedback, I think I have been, to a person. No one has disparaged Jonathan's leadership, you know, decision-making. Like he said, he has to make tough decisions. So that, a lot of that factored into my thinking and my grading in going forward. I think, again, there's a lot of boards that don't report to the Board of Selectmen. I mean, next time someone tells me I raised their taxes, I might just have a printed card that tells them how taxes are set. We don't raise their taxes. But when there's a problem, as he said, the rock's raining down on its head. You know, Olivia's been here long enough, and Michelle was here, can't put a number on it. 70% of our phone calls and our foot traffic, issues add up even under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. I had a guy call today and ask if we could rent chicken pluckers, and so we sent him to the Ad Committee, maybe somebody can help him. You know, did it take her 10 minutes to handle that? Sure. But like you said, MJ's doing a project, he can pull it off. So I think what Jonathan just said echoes the kind of leader that he is. That's what I wanted to summarize.
Oh, thank you for the evaluation.
That's a true story too, about the chicken plucker or whoever else it was. So the Ad Committee got it. Any further comments or concerns or questions about the evaluation process or results? Anybody in the crowd hearing that? Motion, Mr. Sigenovich?
Could I just note something for the record? This is a similar scenario to, to the night we had the finalist interviews for the town administrator. In, in my opinion, it's an important night. That was an important night. We're deciding between three people. One of those three people was going to be the next leader of Dudley. And tonight, we're reviewing the leader that we chose back then, and it's the same amount of people here then as there are now. There is no one here that is not either an appointed or elected official. No one. And I, I don't know if it's, I don't know the reason why. I don't get it. I don't get it. I mean, it's one thing to complain, but I, if, I don't know. I don't get it. That's all. Thank you.
Motion, second is on the floor. Call to a vote. All in favor, state aye.
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 Unanimous? Unanimous. Does anybody have the agenda in front of them? They can read the-
Yes.
We're gonna be going to executive session, people.
Oh, we have departmental-
We are-
Oh, sorry. MJ.
Departmental meetings.
I, you know-
Cut off with the snoring.
I assume that's why he was still here.
Well, you know, I'm not-
Well, thank you.
I'm not gonna say what I wanted to say. I'll let it go.
John, have you blocked it?
Board, board member comments? All good tonight?
I think I'm-
I, I said my piece just now. I'm good.
I think I said enough tonight. All right. Number 11, executive session adjournment. I found the agenda. To conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiation with non-union personnel, SEIU 888, town administrator may or may not reconvene in open session. I think I'm gonna change that to our adjournment, and executive will be determination of our meeting unless otherwise required. Is that how we wanna work on it?
So moved.
Second?
Mark Landry, aye.
Janet Duchesne, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye.
Gary Sigenovich, aye.
Even Sullivan, aye. Let it show unanimous.